Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott.
I'll say the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven...
Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done, as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil.
My allegiance...
To the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas?
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Markcott here. Councilmember Warren White?
Here.
Councilmember Troy Como?
Here.
Councilmember David Merrill?
Here.
Councilmember Ron Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Dan Dahl?
Here.
Item one, public comment. Do we have any cards? We have none. At this time, I remind everybody to put their phone on silent. And we move on to item two A.
Acceptance of the minutes. Regular meeting of December 17th, 2024, which will be published on January 8th, 2025.
I need a motion. Move. Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas. Second by Councilwoman Brooke Markcott. Is there any discussion of our minutes from December 17th? Hearing seen none. Please vote your machines. Thank you. Two B.
Acceptance of the minutes. Regular, special meeting of December 30th, 2024, which will be published on January 8th, 2025.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Councilwoman Brooke Markcott? Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas? Any discussion of our special meeting of December 30th? Don't take those. Then please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Three A.
Special ordinance number 2024-2025-05, an ordinance amending the budget for the replacement of the evaporator coil at City Park.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Some of them. Go move.
Councilman Dan Dahl? Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas had the second on that one. Is there any public comment? Hearing seen none. I need a motion to close our public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Brooke Markcott? Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas? Thank y'all. Now, we move to the main motion. I need a motion for our main motion.
Motion.
Councilman David Merrill? Councilman Ron Davis? All right. First one. I have a first and a second. Is there any discussion on the main motion?
Timetable.
Probably a month.
It don't matter. It's cool.
Yeah, no, but we need it, but I think at least a month.
You weren't here that last installation took forever to get in.
It did. I don't think it's gonna be that bad, but I would say, I'd say about a month.
Yeah.
Mayor, let's make sure we have something written on the warranty.
Okay, I will. And as you know, this has been a...
Yeah.
A problem.
It's been an ongoing thing.
An ongoing issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. I gotta get used to those new names. That's a fun thing.
It's shorter.
Item four A.
Resolution number 2501, a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an agreement by and between the city of New Iberia and Wanderlust Rentals LLC for the operation of Bayutech Watercraft Rentals.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Councilwoman Brooke Markcott?
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gonsalas, just to bring you up to speed on this. Wanderlust is a company that has approached us to build the kayak dock to furnish the kayaks at the kayak launch. Doesn't cost us anything. We had some other companies inquire before, but it cost us a lot of money that they wanted us to invest. They invest all the money. The kayak is rented. There's a QR code. You use it with your phone. You pay your deposit. You pay, you know, everything through credit card. You use the kayak. You return it. You lock it. You scan yourself back out. So it's a pretty painless thing. There'd be eight kayaks. That would allow us to start using it. Originally, when we built and got the grant for the kayak dock, we kicked around for about 3.5 seconds of renting kayaks. And the city attorney was like, there's way too much liability in that. In this contract, you'll see that we will furnish some insurance as well. So we will have insurance. And I think they give us 10%. Is what it says. So we actually, and I'm not really doing this as a money thing. I think we should look at it as a usage, as an opportunity and a service for our community, especially for people who don't have kayaks and would like to take advantage of our facility and of Bayutech. So I think it's a good thing, but that's kind of the nuts and bolts of what we're talking about. So I'll open up the floor for any questions.
It's really cool looking. It's actually an app.
Yes.
I scanned it with my phone.
Yes.
I like how they have this map. And I'm guessing, is that gonna be maybe on a board over there? Just telling you the distance between each town and city?
At some point, they talked about that. I don't know if that's gonna be the start.
It might be on the app, too.
And their plan is to kind of expand. We're one of the first cities on Bayutech. We're the largest city. We have a brand-new kayak dock. But their plan is to utilize other communities' kayak docks as well. I don't know if somebody's gonna paddle a generet, but hey, the more power they do, you know, that'd be good.
They have the time it takes to get there, I believe.
Yeah, they do.
It has it all broken down. Yeah, four and a half hours to go there.
Yeah, you got all day, you know?
It's a lot of paddling.
I guess you gotta come back and return the kayak. So that's a nine-hour trip. Yes, sir.
So, yeah, just any small investments that we let other companies make and things that we can do out in the community is just, it enhances the quality of life around here. And I think, I was waiting for somebody to really offer up something to do and utilize that dock. I think it's a huge asset. So I'm excited about it.
I am, too. And, you know, we have the gentleman here. Come on up.
Come on.
Yeah, I had a question.
Yeah, well, no. That's good. Introduce yourself, and I meant you already, but...
Yeah. My name is Reed Rudisil. I'm out of Lafayette. I'm one of the owners of Wanderlust Rentals. We currently have three locations in Lafayette on Bay Vermillion, going through the city of Lafayette. We're locking down our fourth right now. And it was always our plan to start in Lafayette where we are and then move on to Bayutech. We've been in contact with a numerous amount of the small towns and also private landowners up and down Bayutech from Porbury, Arnaville, all the way down to now St. Martinville, New Iberia. Eventually, we want to have a kayak kiosk, self-service kiosk, at all the locations that the Teche Project installed the nice kayak docks. So in all the small towns, the cities, and the private landowners. So that's just kind of the gist of what we're looking to do. And this would be our first location on Bayutech.
Which is awesome.
I had a question.
Yes.
Yeah, I was wanting to know, from what I was reading and everything, you guys have somebody that's gonna be totally control over everything? A contractor handling everything? Any disputes or anything like that, correct?
Correct, yes. We pretty much install everything. Everything's upfront cost by us. Everything is recurring costs and maintenance by us. We'll, eventually, once we have multiple locations on Bayutech, we'll even be moving the kayaks back and forth. That's what we do in Lafayette. Our whole main gist is to have as many locations as possible on Bayutech. So then people do have the option and the option to basically go from, you know, St. Martinville to Laurville to New Iberia. But, yeah, we pretty much do all the upfront costs and all the reoccurring costs. We have our number on there, our website, everything. So if anybody has any issues, they'll contact us. So really, nothing, you know, they may contact the city, just, you know, but if that does happen, definitely y'all reach out to us and say, hey, maybe we can do a better job of putting up our number, larger letters and font or something.
How many people y'all gonna have for this location?
Sir?
How many people y'all gonna have for this location? Bayutech's location?
So people?
That's working for you guys. How many people gonna be working for you guys in that location?
So, I mean, it's, we have three of us right now out of Lafayette. And we kind of just run, we kind of run all around. But for New Iberia, I mean, it'll be up Point A to Point A. So the users and customers will start here and in here. And then we'll be kind of coming routinely, checking our app to see how many kayaks are getting used. We'll come clean off the kayaks, because of course, Bayutech and Bay Vermillion, a little bit of a dirty, dirtier waterway compared to northern waterways. But so we'll come and, because we do this on Bay Vermillion. We have to go every, like, once a week to kind of clean off the kayaks, sort of thing. So we won't have anybody here, like, full-time. But, you know, I'm out of Lafayette. I have a property management company that we manage short-term rentals all around the state. So I'm always on the move and...
Okay.
So...
All right. I think it's a good thing, something new to the community. And I think it'll work pretty well. Thank you very much.
Definitely.
So, Councilman?
Okay, you...
Just hang on. Councilman Ron Davis, you have the floor next. And I'll call when you have it.
I know this is the first... I know it's the first time in New Iberia, as far as I'm aware of, that we are entering into this type of a situation. And I think it's a plus. I have one question. The hours that were specified were from 7:00 to 8:00 o'clock. From 7:00 to 8:00 o'clock. It seem like 8:00 is past sundown. The kayaks, I know, don't have any lights.
Correct. And if we need to make any modifications to that contract, we definitely can when it comes to specifics like the time, especially like right now. You know, we wouldn't be renting the kayaks past, you know, 5:00 during the wintertime, whenever it gets dark out. So that's basically when we are renting the kayaks is whenever there's light out. So we can definitely make specifications.
Just make it your opening time till dusk.
Correct.
That would be the easiest way to accomplish that.
We do have control on when we can actually, like, when they can stop actually renting the kayaks. So we do basically, like, right now, we end it around, around 5:00 in the afternoon.
Right.
This time of the season. But if we need to put that in the contract, we can add that.
Now, your contractors that you have, that would be over the kayak, where they have identification badges of some sort so that you know who to go to and you could distinguish them from just a regular person, you know? So that the person that's renting the kayak knows that this is who you have to deal with?
Well, we won't have anybody on site.
Yeah, it's not, no one's on site. It's all by app.
Nobody on site.
It's all by app.
Correct. Kind of similar in the bigger cities where you go and rent a bike or a scooter all by the app. It'll be the same concept. So we won't have anybody actually on-site. But if need be, they can call us. And that's mainly, we're able to walk pretty much everybody through any kind of issues that they may have just by giving us a call or texting us. But, yeah, we won't have anybody on-site, but they can definitely give us a call or text us.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ben, sir. I'm gonna call in. You have the floor next, but I always call the city attorney who puts his hand up. Yes, sir.
Well, is this the same contract you have with Lafayette?
The, pretty much. I mean, it's, so not with the city of Lafayette. It's with the Bay Vermillion District, who is just an entity. I'm not sure exactly how it's structured. But this is pretty much the same contract. And I can give y'all contacts to their attorney as well if need be.
Yeah, because, of course, we worry about liability, you know?
Of course. That's, yeah, that's what everybody's concerned with.
I just want to make sure we're not responsible for operations or for safety.
Good question.
Because we're not gonna police that. We can't do that. Although I do, you know, I got some boats. I like to paddle. I'm on the Bayou. And the Teche Project is gonna have a board meeting on the 17th if you haven't made your pitch to them recently.
Yeah, I've been in touch with Patty Holland and the Teche Project for the past year now. They kind of helped me navigate.
Patty came with you when we met.
They'll be at my house on the 17th. My wife's on that board. And we're trying to promote stuff for the city, but they are also doing the same thing.
Okay, perfect.
Cool. Councilman Warren White?
I just wanna ask, the other location you have, they're doing well? And you think the location here would do the same?
So, yeah, we're in Lafayette right now. We have a location at Vermillionville, near the airport, and then on the south side of town, kind of near Youngsville, Broussard area. Those do well. Granted, we just launched this past July and August. So we had about three or four months of runway kind of before the colder weather started coming in. But, I mean, just with any small business, it takes time. I mean, we'll get numerous people go every week, go out there. So I can't really give y'all an exact estimate of, you know, how much traffic it's gonna get. But I definitely like this location just because it is, it seems like it's, I mean, it's right next to kind of the downtown area and a lot of the walkable area of New Iberia. So I do know some of the local Airbnb owners as well. So I'm already in talks with them to kind of push their guests to kind of just at least know of the option to rent kayaks. So, and then, just like I said, we're... Later this week, I go to meet with the Poches, with Poches Meat Market up in Porridge, and then the Knott Family at Teche Brewery in Arnaville. So just taking time to kind of get around and get all the different locations set up.
Councilman White is gonna rent once a week until you get going.
Perfect. And then post on Facebook, Instagram, let everybody know about it.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I have more photos as well, if need be.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman Brooke Markcott?
When do you expect to be up and running over here?
We have the kayaks and the Smart Locks in stock. So basically, it's just ordering the signage and kind of building out the infrastructure, the kayak kiosk, which would take two to three weeks upon, like, signing of a document.
So super fast.
Yeah, we...
It's a good time. We're ready for the spring.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, we have the kayaks.
Take a while to get shipped in, but we have a surplus of kayaks right now in anticipation of getting as much locations set up as possible.
It won't just be kayaks, right? I read that it would be other water toys.
So we have single and tandem kayaks, so one- and two-person kayaks as of now. Eventually, we'll look at doing canoes and then kind of taking it side-by-side. If any particular sites, like, we have the option to do bikes as well. You know, if we see that New Iberia would be a good use to have bikes over here in this downtown area, as well as like St. Martinville, downtown Porridge. So we'll see. We have the option with our Smart Lock technology to do other items.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Didn't mention it before. This is a 20-month contract, but there are options to renew?
Correct.
They were the contractors. So it's 20, but it could be 20 plus 20 plus 20 plus 20, right? Is that, do we want to go that far out?
I wouldn't want to go that far.
We can do the 20 and then revisit. I mean, you know?
Right. We'll look into that.
Yeah, because it does have the contractor option to renew three times.
I got you.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Matter of fact, I had a little problem with that verbiage as it was. It was a 20-year, and then there's three 20s.
Months, 20 months.
20 months, correct, yeah. So it was just the way it seemed like it was written is it's gonna be 20 and then another 20 for renewal? Or you just automatically get three 20s after? As it reads here, it says...
I mean, he is spending some money on infrastructure.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
I mean, as a business guy, I understand that he's making an investment.
So he might do 20 with his option for another 20.
Yeah. Right, yeah.
But not four.
Okay, well, then, if you're okay with that, we'll do 20 with an option for 20, because he is spending some money.
That's fine.
I can't say, okay, see you later. Wouldn't be right. So let's do that. I think that's a good point. If everybody's okay, we'll just do 20 with an option for 20.
Just with just locking in for the first time. You know what I'm saying?
No, I understand completely.
Right.
I got one more question.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. In the responsibilities of New Iberia, it states that the contract manager, which is New Iberia, New Iberia shall designate a contract manager.
That's gonna be my staff.
Correct. It'll be your staff, okay. Now, being that this is something new to the city itself, I'm asking if there's gonna be any qualifications that they're gonna have to get prepped up for to be able to manage the operation?
Not really, because we're not doing anything except if they have a problem. You know, I'm not going out to show somebody how to use a kayak, and neither's my staff. We're not going out and renting them. We're not going to hunt them down. No offense, we're not going to hunt them down if somebody don't return them. You know, that's all on him. So basically, all we're gonna do is, you know, I'll make sure that we monitor, my finance department will monitor to make sure we get our 10%, because that's part of the contract. If there's a complaint, then Amber will log the complaint in the complaint log. And then we'll end up hooking up the complainant with his company. It's more just, as we do with about, I don't even want to count how many things because my staff is overworked already. But it's gonna be just like in the duties of all the other things that we take care of. But there's really nothing for us to go out on-site and do. It's more just to be that contractor.
One thing also.
Go ahead, Ron. Mr. Councilman Davis is finished. Okay.
Another thing, we have an option to opt out if there's a problem that can't get solved, correct? We can opt out of that contract.
There's a couple ways in there. I don't have to go through it, but there's definitely a couple ways that y'all can opt out if certain, if I might be meeting the requirements or giving the monthly requirements.
It's not taken care of, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there's a...
We've got an out clause.
There's a termination for cause.
Right.
We have to give them an opportunity to cure the problem.
Correct.
Pretty much like all of our contracts. We really have that in everything we do.
Thank you, man.
No, thank y'all.
Anybody else? Everybody good? Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Yeah, definitely. Do y'all, does anybody need any pictures or any visuals of the... Y'all awesome? Okay, awesome. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Don't really see anything. Then please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Good discussion. Four B.
Resolution number 2502, a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a cooperative endeavor agreement by and between the city of New Iberia and the Garren Paul Atkinson Lewis Foundation related to the teen court program.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Brooke Markcott? And who was the second? Councilman David Merrill?
Yes, sir.
Good. Any discussion on this item? This is the contract that we enter into with GPAL every year for the work they do with Teen Court. Questions, comments? Yes, sir.
The $10,000? Is that, that was something that we decided that that's all we could have do for him, for his project as far as the teen court?
We negotiated that the first year, and that's kind of where we are, you know, because we furnish the court. Our city prosecutor, Nicole Burke, is involved. The judge, you know, his staff, the, our marshal, you know, Dick is involved. So we put up money and put up efforts in other ways.
Right, right.
So it's, he's using a lot of our infrastructure. So we thought that that was fair, and it's worked.
Do we get information on how successful it is coming back to us?
We get some stats that they bring to us, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That'd be something I think we should be able to...
Yeah.
Look at and...
Sure. Sure.
All right.
Anybody else? Then please vote your machines.
Then please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Item four C.
Resolution number twenty-five oh-three, a resolution authorizing the mayor to act on behalf of the city of New Iberia in all matters pertaining to state project number H zero-one-five-one-oh-point-five, Iberia Street pavement preservation and bike improvements, and further authorizing the mayor to sign in any and all documents, contracts, and agreements in connection therewith.
This is where NPO is coming in and paving Iberia Street, so it's not costing us any money from our road program, it's, it's a really good thing, it's taken a while to get there, but I think this is the next step, so, anyway. Uh, I need a motion.
Boo.
Second.
Second.
Who had the motion? Councilman Troy Como, and who had the second? Mayor Pro Tim Brick, he also, yeah, I think he beat you on that one. That goes. Any discussion on this item?
When is the timeframe gonna be, since you said it took, it's taken.
Well, we've been talking about it for, how long, Jane, three years? At least, uh, but now it looks like they're moving, they're talking about twenty-five, so. What's gonna be interesting, our engineering's just about done and our testing, our new road program that all of you will be part of, that bid's out in, one bid in February, one bid in March or April, and another bid in July. So, roadwork's starting, this should marry in there pretty well, that we'll start that roadwork, I don't know when, because we don't control the timeline, but sometime in twenty-five. And again, it's about a million dollars, I mean, it's, it's, we would have had to allocate that out of our money, so it's, it's a good thing.
Yes, sir.
Do we have, are we in touch with the utility companies, or is someone gonna be in touch with them to make sure, whatever the needs they need to do?
We are trying, and you know, we did that on the twelve-point-five million dollar road program we did in-house, and they still cut some of our streets up after. We have tightened up our patching, and they are stepping up and doing the right thing, you know, and patching them more correctly than they were before, it's always an issue. But yeah, as our road program starts, as soon as our first bids go out, before the contractor begins, we're already talking to the utility companies and letting them know it's coming.
Right.
But that, that's a constant fight.
Sure.
Can tell you've been in government.
Yes, sir.
That's a constant battle, you fix it and they tear it up.
Any, yes.
Sir.
Just, I know we've checked, but any, any sore improvements that are planned on Iberia Street that we need to take care of before this pavement, I know we got caught on polling.
Well, no, we didn't roof, we didn't resurface, yeah, we didn't get caught, we were proactive.
That's right.
Because we stopped it, um, yeah, we checking everywhere, and this is one that he is in the process of making sure. Yeah, 'cause if we had done polling, we'd be tearing it up.
Yeah.
Anyway, anybody else? And please vote your machines. Thank you very much.
Item five A.
Introduction of ordinance number twenty-two-five-oh-one, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a cooperative endeavor agreement by and between the city of New Iberia and hospital service district number one, for the disposal of a parcel of property in the Spanish Town Center subdivision in exchange for certain property to be used as additional access to the Tesh Haven subdivision, and setting for public hearing on January twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, this is our new subdivision, which is two hundred houses, ranging from two-seventy-five to three-fifty in, in value. It's a good thing, it's two hundred houses, eighty-one lots, I think eighty for sure, pre-sold, something that is very good for our community. But we realized early on, they needed a second exit. It's behind the small mart, the little Walmart, and you would enter and exit off of Parkview, uh, O'Generet Road, well, this gives us an exit to Lewis Street. So, in a very neat process of a lot of negotiating and going back and forth, I need to thank Ms. Dionne Viatar and her staff. We worked this crazy deal out where they give us property on Lewis Street at their north campus of IMC, we get fifty feet by roughly four-hundred-and-seventy-five feet, that property has a value of seventy-one thousand dollars. We swapped with them in an intergovernmental agreement, one of the lots at Spanish Town, which is lot sixteen, it has a value of ninety-three thousand dollars, so we're pretty close. What lets us do something like this is the value for the city, that once this road is in with the property swap, this allows the subdivision to come, and we get two hundred thousand dollars worth of taxes a year, plus we get citizens who will buy our services and goods and support our town. And so, when you figure the bleed over of sales taxes, of every kind of service, of contractors, of everything that could happen, and every kind of supplier, and every kind of grocery store, and, you know, it goes on and on, we need this new subdivision. This is the kind of growth that is positive to give us money to do things throughout our whole town. So, it's a good thing, but it's a very unusual thing, it's, it's, you know, you do what you have to do to make things happen, and I really think that, I love my town, I love my job, but sometimes you have to be very creative to make something happen here. So, with the help of the hospital, that's kind of what we're talking about, it's, uh, this lets us proceed, I'm in touch with Brian McClain, the developer, quite often. We have this to go, and we're in the process of annexing thirteen acres, is it thirteen, that will finish up, so as soon as those two things are done, he's ready to purchase the property and begin the subdivision. But this is a crucial step, because without this second entrance and exit, the shop, the, the development wouldn't happen. So, just to give you kind of a rundown of, of what we're talking about.
Will I make that motion?
Yeah, that was my next thing, uh, I just want everybody to know what's going on, so I have a motion by Councilman Dan Doll, who have a second.
Councilman Brooke Markcott.
And, and the motion is the revised one that was on?
Yes, where it gives, and the revision is, we got the prices from the appraiser, um, of course, everything has to be appraised, we have a long process. Our attorney's working with the hospital's attorney, going back and forth on the forging the intergovernmental agreement. Anyway, any questions or comments?
Yes, sir.
I just want to thank the hospital and the board.
Definitely.
For, um, working with the city to make this happen, because this is gonna, is gonna end up being in my district. And it's just a good thing for, for the whole city, we never had nothing happen like this in thirty years or plus, and, um, I think the hospital really, really felt the impact that it would do for the community, because without this, it, it, we couldn't have done it. So, I want to thank the board and, and the hospital administrator and the mayor for working this out, because, um, uh, we, we almost, almost didn't have it.
It's true.
So, thank you.
Uh, Councilman Ron Davis, your hand was up next.
Yeah, uh, I, I can tell that it took some work to put this together, and being a new council member, I had a lot of questions, because of the way the proposal was put together, which wasn't so easy, because it almost looked like it was blind, because you didn't know the facts. But I find that the, uh, the, the, the thing is that you, you needed to have the extra exit or interest for the subdivision, is why we entered into the agreement for the property exchange, you know, so, uh, I applaud you all on, on doing that, and, uh, as soon as we can, we get some maps to be able to look at that and see, uh, what's, uh, what, what else is going on. But anyhow, that, I just wanted to state that for whoever may have questions on why we needed to do that, but it, it makes a lot of sense.
Okay, thank you. Councilman David Merrill.
Yeah, I, I love it myself, 'cause I think what it's gonna do also is, because of what's going on in other areas, in Broussard and Youngsville and everything, with the homes and everything they're building in those areas, that can possibly help us to get some more businesses, restaurants, and different things to come in here.
I like how you think.
In those areas, to provide what we need for those, those people in those areas, and to grow our city a lot more, so, I look at it as something very positive.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Well, thank you for your great negotiation skills with that, and the hospital board as well, for going along with it, 'cause I'm sure it wasn't easy.
No, nothing, nothing worthwhile is easy, and over here, you can probably say that twice, but, you know, to get things to happen here is, 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 is always a challenge, but it's fun.
And that's a lot of homes, that's a lot of homes.
It is a lot of homes, it's, it's, we have bigger subdivisions, we've never had someone come in and say, I'm building two hundred.
Right.
Immediately, and I got eighty pre-sold, so it's a, it's a huge.
That's amazing.
Yeah, that's, that's the impressive part.
Yeah.
And we got a great developer, Brian McClain has done twenty-something subdivisions, you know, we were questioning his engineering, just to make sure that everybody was happy, and his engineers from Lafayette have done two hundred, so, I mean, the numbers are just staggering, it's, it's, they, they, they on their game.
Amazing, thank you.
Sure. Everybody good?
Yeah, one, one last thing, we, um, and the lot that we're giving up is one of many that we own out there on Spanish Town.
Yes.
In that development, and we acquired that lot in two thousand and eleven, and have done nothing with it.
Correct.
Okay.
So, we, it's, it's vacant property, we've never used it, and we don't need it at this point for anything else.
And just to give my spiel, okay, we own lot six through sixteen right now, but we're giving up sixteen, okay? So, lot number six is right next to the Hampton, that's where the frontage road is gonna come through, that is key. The frontage road is in play now, that the city's been waiting on for the eight years I've been here, and probably eight years before. So, the city's been waiting for this frontage road for sixteen years. What this does for us is lot seven through ten is big enough for a big box, so picture a big box there and parking, cross the road that goes through the area, then all the way to lot sixteen, so lot ten to lot fifteen, because we're, we're giving up sixteen, is plenty big enough, and I've already got my architect, we laid it out, we checked it, to put another big box and have parking. So, we're not gonna want to get rid of any more of that property, because once the frontage road comes, then we can start talking to some bigger boxes and bigger players, and already kind of have, but the frontage road is key, then that gives us two more big boxes, which is taxes and jobs, which is what makes this place go. But this one lot, it doesn't hurt the plan at all to say, okay, I'll harsh trade you, you know, that for what we're getting with the houses, just to tell everybody kind of the future of, of that area that we own the property.
Anybody else? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. All right, that's huge, thank you, thank you very much. All right. Councilman's remarks. I'm gonna start on Councilman Dan Doll's side tonight.
He was good, I wanna.
That's why I did it. He was looking down.
I was thinking about something else. Well, I want to welcome the new members here, uh, tonight, and, uh, I think it's exciting to start this new year with all this development in New Iberia, with a lot more to come, and I think, uh, I think me and the mayor was talking earlier, if we think two thousand and twenty-four is good, I think two thousand and twenty-five is gonna be much better. And I think a lot of work was done by the past members and administration to get where we at, and sometimes you're not sitting here to enjoy the benefits of someone else did. And I think a lot of benefits that we, we can enjoy in the next four years, is things at the last council helped us get to this, so I'm glad and thank you, ma'am, and wish, wish the best of everybody this coming year, and their health, and, um, let's keep on going, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, uh, I'm glad to be on board, uh, it's been a busy last five or six months, and, uh, I, I mean, I thank you all for y'all help, uh, even making it through this first packet, I had to make a few phone calls to get a better understanding of what was really going on. And, um, with that subdivision, that was the one that gave me the most, uh, you know, difficulty in trying to understand, but, uh, I mean, I come from a background dealing with those type of things. And, uh, looking back at the census, we've had been following our census numbers, okay, so, uh, this is gonna help us overall, you know, this will bring an increase, you know, all we gotta do is sell the lots and bring the people in. So, uh, anyhow, I applaud you all, and thank you for, for your help.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm glad to be back on the council again, uh, it's been quite a while, and, uh, I thank you guys for what y'all did so far, the council that was here before us, because at the time when I was on the council, we didn't have all of the money and the things we needed to be able to move this city to the level where it's at right now. And I'm also looking at working with Ms. Jane Bro, who's good at what she does as grants and things like that, where we need to move forward as well, she's helped me in the past and many others, and, uh, I'm thankful for all of the citizens who, who allowed me to get back in here and, uh, just come right in, and come back in without having to really work hard to get back up here, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just, just echo some of the sentiments, I'm looking forward to working in which each and every one of y'all, and like I've done in the past, you know, representing the whole city, I want to know all the needs of every district, and help with every district, and, and try to move your problems alone and, and fix the issues we have in the city, as well as, you know, advance the people that, that live in our community. But, you know, I, I'm super excited just tonight, and echo what Dan said, that, you know, we, a lot of us make investments and we don't see the fruition, but when I first got on there, I think it was one of the first things we approved was that kayak dock, with, uh, when I first got in, and now we got a private investor has located a dock and willing to invest in our community, so. That's, there's endless possibilities in this community, what's next, you know, it's unlimited, I think we have ample opportunities to, uh, encourage people to come locate buildings in this town and, and be proactive in that approach, and if we can make it simple enough and easy enough, they'll come, and I'm excited about the future of the city. I'll just say thank you, mayor, and to the, to the staff, I'm making me feel welcome, glad to be aboard.
Yes, sir.
I just want to say I'm excited for all the projects that are coming to the city, I want to thank the people in District Two for voting me in, it wasn't easy, and I'm here to do the work for you all, and that's about it.
I just want to welcome all the new faces, some of you aren't so new to the, the seat, but new to me, working with me, but I look forward to four years with you guys, uh, if y'all need anything, feel free to reach out, you guys should all have my number now, um, even if y'all need somebody else's number, let me know, I might have it for you. And that's it, thank you.
Good, well, as everybody else has said, look, we got a great new council, uh, we stand on the shoulders of the last two councils, and, you know, twenty-six mayors, uh, twenty-five mayors before, you know, a whole lot of people have put this town where it is. And I'm excited that, uh, I can tell already, we got good energy, you know, the teamwork that we had in our first two councils was, were not a fluke, you know, we gonna do it again, and, uh, through teamwork, we can get a lot done, and there is a lot to do. We are starting off strong, but it ain't always, you know, it ain't always roses up here, I mean, there are times, you know, you gotta kill the calf and get bloody before you get the steak, um, so sometimes it is a little rough, but these are the kind of things, and if we share the same vision, uh, I meet with, uh, my staff and the architectural firm that helped me put together the master study, we'll be doing phase two of the master study, the first piece of it is economic development, because we see some, uh, possibilities and potential. We're gonna be hiring a firm, and we're gonna be doing some studies ourselves, that are gonna give us something to promote with this economic study we're putting together, that we'll be able to reach out even more aggressively with developers, um, and I think that's gonna go a long way. So, we got some good things coming that will be the catalyst for even more growth and more possibilities, um, so just hang in there, but it's, it's a lot of fun and I'm excited to see the new faces, and you can feel the new energy, um, it's gonna take a little while for us to all, for my new people, you gotta step up, you know, getting that first and that second is sometimes a, a competitive thing, so, you know, just go a little quicker, and I'm not trying to slight anybody, but, you know, the, the winner gets it, that's just how it goes. But, uh, anyway, I'm excited, it's been a good day, um, it's a good time to be in government. That's pretty much all I have, our next meeting is January twenty-first, and with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Thank you.